Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the town meeting for June 2021. Thank you all for joining us in this hot, humid summer night. I would like to open the town meeting now to Mr. Ronald Moody, Constable for the Town of Madison and the County of Somerset, State of Maine. Greetings in the name of the State of Maine. You are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of Town Madison inside county and state qualified by law to vote in town affairs to meet at the Madison Junior High Auditorium inside town on Monday, the seventh day of June 2021 A.D., at seven o'clock in the evening, then and there to act upon Article One and Articles Three through thirty-two as set out below to rep, and to notify and warn said inhabitants to meet at the Old Point School Election Room inside town on Tuesday, the eighth day of June 2021 A.D., at eight o'clock in the forenoon, then and there to act upon by secret ballot Article Two as set out below. The polling hours therefore to be from eight o'clock in the morning until eight o'clock in the evening. Article One, to choose a moderator to preside at said meeting. Do I hear any nominations for moderator?
Nomination for Ernie Hilton.
Nomination for Ernie Hilton, for his second. Are there any more nominations? Hearing none. All those who wish to vote for moderator, please cash your ballots. Okay, Ernie Hilton has been elected as moderator.
I, Ernie Hilton.
I, Ernie Hilton.
You swear?
I swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And this state.
And of this state.
So long as I shall.
So long as I shall.
Continue a citizen thereof.
Continue a citizen thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Ernie Hilton.
I, Ernie Hilton.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
The duties incumbent upon me as moderator.
The duties incumbent on me as moderator.
Of this meeting.
Of this meeting.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of the state.
And laws of the state. Greetings. I'm going to introduce an Article One A, which is to establish the Maine Moderator's Manual, Sixth Edition, two thousand and five, as published by the Maine Municipal Association as the rules governing this meeting. Do I hear a motion?
No.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? There are none, you can call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Downed hands, all those opposed, it's a vote. Oh, God.
Sorry.
Article Two is to be passed over and dealt with tomorrow, so we'll go on to Article Three. Can anybody hear me?
Don't mean to kick you out of the way, Ernie.
Evening, folks. I just wanted to go over the packet that you picked up on the way in, just to guide you through a couple of things to help with the process tonight. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Tim Curtis, the town manager. Pleased to be here to present this to you tonight on behalf of the Select Board. Right on the front page, just remember, and tell your friends if they're coming out to vote for the local elections tomorrow, that all voting takes place where?
At the Old Point Avenue School, from eight a.m. to eight p.m.
We're not set up to do any voting at the town office tomorrow. The articles are in this packet, Articles One through thirty-two. Just a quick note about the budget articles. The budget was put together in such a way that we're going to be asking you to take four-hundred-thousand dollars out of fund balance to offset any raising of taxes from this budget. We did not bring forward any money last year due to concerns about revenues in the midst of COVID, so this way we are able to get some of the projects proposed onto the budget and use this money to offset taxes. Now, if you had a chance to look at this packet, you may have noticed on page nine there's a word about taxes and property values. I don't think it's going to come to surprise to anyone that property values have been rising due to the rapid increase in the value of home sales throughout our area and really across the state of Maine. What that has done is it has put our sales ratio in a situation where we've dropped below ninety percent. What the state Maine revenue requires of every municipality is that your values, your valuations, be at least ninety percent of home sales. So the rapid increase of home sales, we've fallen to about eighty-six percent and will continue to fall unless we make an adjustment. So what the assessor's agent, Shirley Bartlett, and I will be proposing to the assessors when they set the tax rate in August, is that we look at doing an across-the-board increase to all property values. It's in doing a revaluation. At this market, this is not the time to do a revaluation, but rather an across-the-board increase of five percent to allow us to maintain that ninety percent. So what that does is it increases your property values, yes, your taxes go up, but hopefully the decrease in the mill rate will offset that, so that your tax bill will remain net the same. The school budget, as you'll have an opportunity to vote on that tomorrow, the school budget as proposed and passed to this point is a decrease to the taxpayer, the county budget is a decrease to the taxpayer, and the municipal budget as presented tonight is a decrease to the taxpayer. So that bodes well for being able to raise those values, lower the mill rate, and keep things relatively stable. Articles twenty-nine through thirty-two tonight are four ordinance changes. The first one has to do with site review. In that packet, there's a two-page summary of all the changes done to site review. Site review is the tool that the Planning Board uses to evaluate commercial projects. Site review has nothing to do with your home or residential. It's all commercial projects, and we made a few changes to it. The most notable change was adding a section that covers unusual projects like solar arrays, windmills, cell towers, and you'll notice that we added salvage yards and junkyards. The town has a junkyard salvage yard ordinance, that's number one fifty-four, but that is only under the purview of the Select Board. So to get salvage yards under the purview of the Planning Board, we had to make changes to site review, and then we have to make a small alteration to the junkyard or salvage yard. So that's why those two changes are recommended. There is Article thirty-one, which proposes a limited parking in front of the Madison Public Library on Pleasant Street, limiting that to one hour, a hundred feet from Old Point up Pleasant Street. And then Article thirty-two is something that several towns around us have been dealing with called regulating needle exchange programs. And the article that was in the paper did a good job of explaining that Skowhegan, Noridwok, and Solon have already dealt with this at their town meetings in the past year. Skowhegan and Noridwok choosing to regulate where a needle exchange program could happen. The town of Solon doing a prohibition of needle exchange programs. Needle exchange programs are sanctioned by the state CDC, and the CDC can identify an area in the state where they feel a needle exchange program would be beneficial. Just to be clear, Madison has not been targeted as an area for a needle exchange program by the CDC, but it has been recommended to us to have some sort of regulation in place. I will note that you'll see on the board that this came to you at town meeting with a split vote from the Select Board. The majority vote was to do a prohibition ordinance. So if you're voting in favor of Article thirty-two, you're voting in favor of a prohibition ordinance. The minority vote, Mrs. Brier and Chairman Diziano, they are more in favor of regulating needle exchange programs. So I think that gives you a fairly good idea what to expect there. So thank you very much. Thanks for coming out tonight, and when you go to vote, you're going to the Old Point School tomorrow. All right. Thanks, have a good night.
Article Three, to see if the town will vote to pay the directors in the Department of Electric Works ten thousand two hundred dollars for the ensuing year, said sum to be paid from the funds of the department. Selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
Hear a second?
Second.
Hear a motion and a second. Although any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article Four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eleven thousand two hundred dollars to pay its Select Board. Advisory Board recommends yes. Compensation is included under Article Five. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
Do I hear a second? I haven't heard a second yet. We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article Five, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to use up to twenty-five thousand dollars from undesigned revenue in the event of overdrafts, unforeseen events, or emergencies. Any use of this contingency arrangement must be borne on at a Select Board meeting, and the expenditures made will be listed in a subsequent town report. Total transfer of undesigned revenues shall not exceed twenty-five thousand dollars within the fiscal year. Transfer of undesigned revenues in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars must be authorized by a town meeting vote. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
Hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article Six, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the general government account in the general fund. We have proposals of administration, five hundred twenty-one thousand six hundred fifty dollars, Planning Board, six thousand dollars, current enforcement, sixty thousand five hundred dollars, boards and committees, nineteen thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars, assessing services, forty thousand dollars, elections, ten thousand dollars, for total expenses of six hundred fifty-seven thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars, against which there is approved revenue from the TIF of thirty-seven thousand dollars, for a total to be raised by taxation of six hundred twenty thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars. Both the Selectmen and the Advisory Board recommend that sum. Do I hear a motion?
No move, recommend the amount.
Any, hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, vote.
Can the town manager tell us how much is in the TIF account?
I think that question was, how much is in the TIF account?
Yeah, how much, how much is in there? How much are we going to take out of that, out of the total balance figure?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Balance figure. After you take the thirty-seven.
We budget pretty much all the money that comes in. We annually get about five hundred thousand dollars in TIF, so we budget just about all of that to be expended throughout the fiscal year.
Yeah.
Moderator, how much longer does the TIF last?
So it's a thirty-year TIF that runs through two thousand thirty-five. Within that TIF is a fifteen-year credit enhancement agreement, and that credit enhancement agreement has about four years left on it. And that credit enhancement agreement is what generates this money back and forth to the town and to the business. So that will run out in about four years. However, I will add, once the credit enhancement agreement runs out, the money comes directly to the town as tax revenue, so there's not a loss of money once that enhancement ends. Actually, it increases the money the town collects.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor of Article Six, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article Seven, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for public safety in the general fund. We have proposals of ambulance, seventy-five thousand dollars, police, four hundred forty thousand dollars, fire, a hundred eleven thousand nine hundred eighty dollars, animal control, eleven thousand dollars, for total expenses of six hundred thirty-seven thousand nine hundred eighty dollars, against which there'd be a deduction for approved revenue from the TIF of twenty-five thousand dollars, for a total raised by taxation of six hundred twelve thousand nine hundred eighty dollars, which is recommended by the Selectmen and the Advisory Board. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
Move the recommended amount, we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article Eight, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the public utilities account in the general fund. Streetlights, we have recommendations of streetlights, fifty-eight thousand dollars, municipal solid waste, recycling, two hundred fifty-five thousand dollars, storm drains, fifty thousand, fire protection by which hydrants, two hundred fifty-five thousand dollars, for total expenses, five hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars, against which there is approved revenue from the TIF of forty thousand dollars, leaving a total to be raised by taxation of five hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars, which sum is recommended by both the Selectmen and the Advisory Board. Do I hear a motion?
No move, recommend the amount.
We have a motion, we recommend, a motion for the recommended amount. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do I have any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article Nine, as written, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the public utilities account in the general fund, and we have the recommended amounts of public works, six hundred thirty-five thousand six hundred dollars, against which would be approved revenue from the TIF of fifty thousand dollars, for total to be raised by taxation of five hundred eighty-five thousand six hundred dollars. The Selectmen and the Advisory Board both recommend that amount. Do I hear a motion?
This moderator.
Yes.
Moderator, sorry. There's a typo here that the town manager missed. That should read public works account, not public utilities. So I would make a motion to amend that language.
Your motion is that it would be, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the public works account in the general fund?
Yes.
Five hundred eighty-five thousand six hundred dollars.
Right.
I'll accept that as a motion.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article Ten, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the recreation account in the general fund. Selectmen recommend seventy-eight thousand dollars. Advisory Board recommends the same amount. Do I hear a motion?
No move, recommend the amount.
We have a motion for the recommended amount, we have a second. We have a motion, I think we have a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article Eleven, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the cemeteries in the general fund. The Selectmen and the Advisory Board both recommend thirty-five thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
We have a motion for the recommended amount, do I hear a second? We have a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article Twelve, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for community services in the general fund. And among these, we have proposals for general assistance, seventeen thousand five hundred dollars, community programs. We have U.S. Naval Sea Cadet Corps, one thousand dollars, Lake Association, fifty-five hundred dollars, American Legion Flags, six hundred dollars, People Who Care Food Cup, fifteen thousand five hundred dollars, Recycling slash H H W, one thousand dollars, Lakewood Theater, five thousand dollars, total community programs, twenty-eight thousand six hundred dollars. Service organizations, proposals of Madison Anson Senior Citizens, forty-five hundred dollars, Somerset Humane Society, seventy-six hundred fifty dollars, hospice volunteers of Somerset County, twenty-six hundred dollars, Spectrum Generations, forty-six hundred dollars, for total for service organizations of nineteen thousand three hundred fifty dollars, grand total for all community services, sixty-five thousand four hundred fifty dollars, against which there is a credit for an approved revenue from a TIF, five thousand dollars. Selectmen and the Advisory Board both recommend the balance, which is sixty thousand four hundred fifty dollars. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
So move.
Recommend the amount.
Recommend the amount, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article Thirteen, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the Madison Public Library in the general fund. Both the Selectmen and the Advisory Board recommend one hundred twenty-one thousand four hundred fifty dollars. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article Fourteen, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for town-owned property account in the general fund. The Selectmen and the Advisory Board both recommend twenty-six thousand nine hundred dollars. Do I hear a motion?
No move, recommend the amount.
We have a motion for the recommended amount, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article Fifteen, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for road surface projects. Selectmen and the Advisory Board both recommend two hundred fifteen thousand dollars. Do I hear a motion?
No move, recommend the amount.
Hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article Sixteen, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate for highway equipment purchases. Selectmen and Advisory Board both recommend two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
We have a motion for the recommended amount, any second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article Seventeen, to see what sum the town will raise and appropriate for future fire department equipment purchases. The Selectmen and the Advisory Board both recommend one hundred fifty thousand dollars. Do I hear a motion?
Motion for recommend the amount.
We have a motion for recommend the amount, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article Eighteen, to see if the town will vote to raise, or vote to use, four hundred thousand dollars from undesigned fund balance to offset taxes. Selectmen and the Advisory Board both recommend yes. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Mr. Chairman, can you tell us how much is in the undesigned fund balance?
At the end of our last budget, so it would have been the June thirtieth, twenty twenty of ballots, was one point four million.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article Nineteen, to see if the town will vote to allocate the balance of the snowmobile excise tax refund to the Avanante Snow Riders Snowmobile Club. The Selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote.
Mr. Moderator, can I just make a point of order here? There may be some confusion if I go back to Article Nine, and I just want your clarification as the moderator. My intent of the motion was to change the wording from public utilities to public works and make a motion to pass that amount. Is that how you see?
That's how I understood it.
Okay. Thank you.
Did anybody, did anybody understand otherwise? Did we all understand the town manager was amending the word public utilities to public works and proposing that the total should be raised by taxation, it was going to be five hundred eighty-five thousand six hundred dollars? Any questions about that at all? Okay. Article Twenty, to see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collective to accept prepayment of taxes for the year twenty twenty-two slash twenty twenty-three, not yet due or assessed. Selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article Twenty-eighty-one, to see if the town will vote the date of September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, or thirty days after commitment, whichever is later, as the date when the first one-half of taxes assessed for the current year shall become due and payable, and the date of March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, when the second one-half of taxes assessed for the current year shall become due and payable, with taxes unpaid after said dates to bear interest at the rate of six percent per annum from said dates. Selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article Twenty-two, to see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collective to enter a standard agreement with residential taxpayers establishing a corp. tax club, a corp. payment plan for property taxes whereby, one, the taxpayer agrees to pay specified monthly payments to the town based on his or her estimated and actual tax obligation for the current year of property taxes; number two, the town agrees not to charge interest on timely payments made pursuant to the tax club agreement; number three, the town authorizes the collective to accept tax club payments for current taxes which may be due prior to the commitment of those taxes; number four, the agreement is automatically terminated if a scheduled payment is late and the taxpayer then becomes subject to the same due date and interest date and rates as other taxpayers who are not participating in a tax club; number five, only taxpayers who do not have any outstanding tax obligation for prior years, prior tax years, are eligible to participate in the tax club program; and six, taxpayers wishing to participate in a tax club for a particular property tax year shall enter into an agreement with the town by a publicly advertised deadline determined by the tax club. The Selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
We have a motion, we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article Twenty-three, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Selectmen to advertise and sell town-owned personal property at public sale. Selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
I have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article Twenty-four, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Selectmen to dispose of tax-acquired property in any manner that the Selectmen deem to be in the best interest of the town. The Selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article Twenty-five, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Selectmen to set all wages and salaries for the coming year except for those already provided for. Selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Downed cards, all those opposed, it's a vote. Article Twenty-six, to see if the town will vote to authorize the town manager under the direction of the Board of Selectmen to apply for grant monies and to expend monies received for the stated grant purposes. For twenty twenty-one slash twenty twenty-two, this includes funds granted to the town through the federal COVID relief program, also known as the American Rescue Plan. Selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns?[1690.47] Seeing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, let's vote. Article 27. To see if the town, in accordance with 36, MRSAA steps in 506, they will vote to fix the rate of 2% interest to be paid on overpaid or evaded taxes. Selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion?
No motion.
Hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, let's vote. Article 28. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept any money or property, real or personal, from any donor, and such money or property shall be utilized as specified by the donor. Selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion?
No motion.
Hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, let's vote. Article 29. Shall ordinance entitled corp. site plan review (chapter 484) be amended? Selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion?
No motion.
Any, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, let's vote. Article 30. It shall ordinance entitled corp. unrevealed graveyards and junkyards (chapter 154) be amended to include site review by the planning board. The selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion?
No motion.
Hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, let's vote. Article 31. Shall ordinance entitled vehicles and parking (chapter 399) be amended to include a 60-minute parking limit on Pleasant Street 100 feet from the intersection with Old Point Avenue? Selectmen recommend yes. Do I hear a motion?
No motion.
I have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Yes.
I just wanted to clarify why you want that telling the line where you don't want people's... Basically not telling people, "Hey, get out." You don't want you to be along with them. And that's what we're, why we want it there is because we have public wifi, and you have several cars that sit either right in front of the walkway or right on the corner sometimes for hours and hours. And then I have people that are older or people that have some mobility issues and they're in the parking lot, the SRS parking lot, and walking along the way to the line with us. So I just wanted to be telephone call to the corner so that we can keep that because people actually want to come into the library and will still have access to the wifi. The wifi comes in, in other parts further away than right in front of the car. I'm not saying don't utilize the wifi.
Thank you, Julie. Did anybody understand that? Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, we call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Down cards, all those opposed, let's vote. Article 32. Shall ordinance prohibiting needle exchange programs, needle disposal sites, and medically-supervised injection sites be established? Selectmen recommend yes. By a three or two vote, you can, select board members Savage, Moody, and Harropian were in favor, members Vinciano and Dwyer were opposed. Do I need a motion?
Motion approved.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
What can we do about everybody dumping the needles all over people's lawns? Anything we can do to address that?
Did anybody understand what he, what the gentleman said?
I believe the question was needles that are being disposed of on people's lawns or public property. The process right now and will continue to be, if anyone sees those, please contact the sheriff's office in Madison, and they will come and dispose of them properly. We don't want anybody touching them or picking them up on their own. This particular ordinance really, it's difficult to say whether that would solve or improve that situation.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, and this is a kind of a back-up vote here, so you have to read it carefully. Shall an ordinance prohibiting... So the ordinance is going to prohibit these programs. Shall let ordinance prohibiting these programs be established? I'm going to leave it to yourselves to try to understand what, which way you want to vote, yes or no, as to this. If you need any further explanation about that, Mr. Curtis is certainly here to, is this a, it's a little bit of an obtuse wording, wording. Okay, so shall an ordinance prohibiting these programs be established? Do you call for a vote? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Okay, down cards. If this is even remotely close, I'm going to call for a secret ballot, okay? All those opposed, please raise your card. Okay, I think the yeas have it. Do you agree? We're at the end of the warrant. No motion to adjourn is called for since you're going to be carrying out Article two tomorrow. And where are we going to be doing that?
Is that your condition?
It's not as cool as this room. But Kathy's going to be there, she makes it cool. She's a cool old person.